Good evening, welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded. We have a full agenda, although several of these items will be continued. We have a continuation of a public hearing for 180-182 Turnpike Road, continuation of a public hearing for the earth moving permit at 25 Gleason, continuation of the public hearing for the site plan application at 190-212 Oak Street, an update on Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street. We have a discussion with Silver Hollow Estates on the landscape planting behind lot 26. We have the execution of my Lars for the amended definitive subdivision plan and B Walt Eastman plans for West Park Drive Extension, a discussion on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and a discussion of future town meeting articles. Unfortunately, Town Planner had minor surgery, so he's with us on the phone but not in person, so we'll have to manage the technology as best we can. Try and move along quickly, but the first thing we need to figure out is our schedule for the rest of the month. And if you guys could look at your calendars, we have a meeting scheduled for next, for two weeks from today, the 18th. Town meeting is the 17th. We need to anticipate that town meeting may be continued to the 18th, in which case we will not be able to meet on the 18th. So we need a backup plan, and I'm proposing the 25th. I don't know if everybody can make that.
It's fine with me.
That works for me.
All right. So any motion to continue this evening would need to be made to continue to the 18th or the 25th, if necessary. And I think we got draft motions on everything that reflect that, but just, if you do make a motion, just bear that in mind. All right. So first item on the agenda, we have a continuation of the public hearing for 180-182 Turnpike Road, site plan application. I have a letter from the applicant requesting a continuation on this. I'll read it into the record, dated September 29th, to the members of the planning board. We're scheduled for continuation of the public hearing for a site plan review application on October 4th, 2022, for 180-182 Turnpike Road. Due to issues caused by Hurricane Ian, my client is requesting that October 4th hearing on this matter be continued until the meeting of the planning board is currently scheduled for October 18th. We are aware that due to special town meeting on October 17th, a planning board meeting scheduled for the 18th may be continued to October 25th, and anticipating this matter may require additional hearing dates. I respectfully grant the planning board additional time as needed through November 1st, 2022, for continued public hearings, and that's signed. Marshall Gould, attorney for the applicant. Any questions? Would you care to make a motion on that?
Do we want to change the motion that was sent to November 1st or leave it on Tuesday, October 25th?
I think the 25th is fine.
Okay, all right, because he requested-
If we have to, we'll continue it again.
He said November 1st, so that's-
Yeah, well, you can do the 1st, but-
No, I just, as I said, his letter asked for the 1st, so that was the reason.
Well, the 1st is our first meeting in November, so maybe he's just giving us an extra meeting in case. But I would expect us to take that up next week. It might have to be continued again to the 1st.
Right.
I'm hoping we can take it up on, I say next week, but next meeting. So I'm hoping we can take it up on the 18th. If not, we'll take it up on the 25th, and then we might have to take it up again on the 1st, depending on where we're at, so.
Okay, I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for site plan review application of 180-182 Turnpike Road to Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant.
Yeah, Hazel, could we just add the 18th date in there? And I'm not sure, I think we may have already continued it to the 18th, but could you add to Tuesday, October 18th, or October 5th, depending, you know? Jim Robbins, are you on the phone? I was hoping he could just verify that that's adequate. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, John, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, that's five to zero in favor of continuing that hearing. Next item on the agenda is continuation of the public hearing for the earth moving permit at 25 Gleason. Let's see, I have, I have to find that one in my email, guys, sorry.
I mean, it came like 10 days ago, that request for the change. It was a while ago, it wasn't just kind of last week. My memory.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I can hear you now, Jim.
You have a request for extension, 25 Gleason Street, from the applicant's engineer, Mike Scott. It was given to you last Thursday in my email to the board. His request was for continuance to October 25th.
Would they be ready for the 18th, if we met on the 18th?
They're working with the town engineer to resolve the comments. I don't think they'll be ready. You could continue it to the 18th and then just continue it again, but I'm just letting you know that that's their current circumstance. If you want to continue it to the 18th, then that's fine.
Yeah, Jim, I'm not finding that letter.
Can you see my screen? Can you see the A&R plan? Can the board hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to share my screen right now. You should see the A&R plan for Ruggles. If you can see that, I will try to put up the request for extension.
Yeah, Jim, can you just forward it to my email? Why don't we, why don't we move past this for a second? Let's go to the continuation of the public hearing for the site plan application at 190-212 Oak Street. I have a request for continuance on this agenda item as well, dated September 29th. Jim, we hereby request a continuance of the public hearing on Hana Place, your next scheduled meeting on October 18th or the October 25th meeting, if October 18th meeting can't be held due to conflict with the town meeting. That's signed for Farouk Ansari from Ansari Builders. Any questions on that? Anybody care to make a motion?
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application for 190-212 Oak Street to Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant, or October 18th, 2022, at 6:30 PM, if that meeting is held.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor? All right, that's five to zero in favor of continuing 190-212 Oak Street. Jim, we're going to come back to that 25 Gleason once I get that email. Why don't we do the update on Village Commons now? Can you address the board on that?
Mark, can you hear me?
Yep.
Village Commons, I don't know if the town engineer is here.
Yeah, Lisa's here.
Okay. The board received some photos from the town engineer, which I forwarded a couple weeks ago regarding an ongoing drainage problem that we have at Village Commons. The drainage issue exists at the rear of the homes abutting the Westboro Village townhouses. There is a drainage swale and a catch basin. Within the swale, the water moves to the low point, which is at the rear of the site of Village Commons, and is intended to enter the catch basin in the swale. Currently, it does not get to the basin. I know that they have not finished graded the elevations around that basin, and when they do, it will probably work. However, the area between the homes, the common landscape-
Jim, you dropped off.
Several inches deep in that area, which, if you're walking in that area, you're up to ankles in water. Lisa has brought this to our attention and is asking that Farouk provide an analysis by an engineer to address the drainage, to make sure that this isn't a problem every time it rains.
All right, Lisa, do you have any comments to add to that? Oh, being asked to use the microphone.
Can you hear me? On the swale, we believe that once final grades are put in, it should be taken care of. Of course, we'll be watching, making sure that that happens. So I don't think any action needs to be taken now on that. As far as the flooding in between, in the common area, it does drain, but the fact that it is flooding as high as it is, we would like the engine, you know, his engineer to address that. You know, I know that those flooding events have been large, but they shouldn't be having a foot, a foot and a half of water in there. I mean, they are draining, that's a good, good part, but, you know, we should have it looked at.
Farouk, do you have any comments on that, on the drainage issues?
I am, it's your project. I was not following that. What was that? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I understand, it's, it's been choppy with the communication issues, but we'd just like a response from your engineer as to how those drainage issues are going to be resolved, or what measures you might take.
In Village Commons?
Right.
Okay. Frankly speaking, I don't think there are any grading issues there. It is a very flat, flat land, and when somebody's standing there and watching when it rains, yeah, it puddles, but an hour later, it's all gone, dissipated. On the backside of it, backside of the units, we are getting a lot of, a lot of water from our neighbor. There's a pipe they left that comes in, I think I even sent a video to her, showing the water flowing in from their side to our side. Now, that side is not 100% done yet. We're just waiting for some electrical trenches to be done, and then it'll be all graded out. Once that's graded out, there won't be any water issues there. Now, one of the things that in Lisa's email, she's pointed out that one of the grates, the catch basin was a little bit high. Well, the reason it's high is because the second coat of paving is not done yet. So once, once you do the second coat, it will be right over, over, you know, the grate, and then the water will flow right into the catch basin there. This is in between those two garages. I really and truly don't see any super duper grading issues there, other than the fact that the whole, whole site is flat. So it does accumulate some water when it rains real, real hard, and then it just dissipates. It's all gone.
Farouk, one of my concerns is the, that patio area, right? If, you know, we've all been through winters where it gets slushy and then freezes, and that patio's not going to survive if the drainage doesn't work properly.
I, I don't know what to say. This is the first season that the patio's been in, and we'll have to wait and see. I don't think the water stays on it if the snow is cleared. It's, it's a flat patio with a little pitch to it. There is a pitch to it for the water to flow out. I'll tell you, I don't want to sound like I know what I'm talking about. That whole design was improper. Whoever designed the patio was incorrect. It never should have been put there. So I'm trying to work with what was approved, with the approved plans. Whoever the architect was, I mean, why do we need a patio there? You know, a flat patio in front of that, and that, it's going to hold the water for a little bit, but once it, once a couple hours pass, it just flows out.
Yeah, but Farouk, it was your architect, right?
What?
It was your architect that designed it, right?
No, it was not my design. I bought the, bought the project from someone else.
Okay.
So it was approved by, gotten approved by Smart Growth, which is owned by, you know, another general, but I don't want to throw names around, but I bought it from them, and I did exactly what was on the plan.
Right.
And I think I had mentioned it to the planning board several times before. There were a lot of flaws in that design, but what can I say, you know? So it's too flat, so.
All right. All right. So Lisa, we don't have to take any action today?
No, but I would say to that, regardless of, if the design was approved, if there's clearly a problem, then we should change it. I'm not objected to waiting a little bit and seeing what happens, but I'm assuming that some yard drains, because it is so flat, would take care of the problem. I agree with Farouk as far as the side yard, it's not finished, that's what I said previously. So we should wait. I don't think we should do anything there, but I think we should be looking at that common area now, and then making the appropriate changes in the spring if there, if there's necessary.
Yep. And I would like, through the chair, point out the fact that that is such an expensive patio, you know? I cannot even begin to tell you, $50,000 for that, that silly patio. And there's no room there to do anything there, I mean, to change or to, it, it does have a pitch like it's supposed to, so the water doesn't stay there. But if you stand there and watch it while it's raining, even the road gets flooded when it's raining, you know? Even the road would get flooded, but 15, 20 minutes later, they're all gone.
Right, all right.
Yeah, but Farouk, you own the project now, and therefore if problems come up-
I don't think it's-
You're the people that have to deal with it.
-dissolving in 20 minutes either.
That's the answer.
I mean, we're talking hours, so maybe 12 hours, which is a good sign, but it's not actually acceptable, because like Mark said, during winter months, it may freeze. I agree with you, Farouk, the design's probably flawed in somewhat.
And I think, I think you're right, Lisa. It will freeze, you know, if the water falls and it freezes all of a sudden, it'll become a ski, ski, ski rink.
Right.
But somebody didn't think of that when they designed it.
Yeah.
But so all the more reason not to leave it. I mean, if we know there's a problem, why would we sit back and leave it for the residents to have to deal with, because they're going to look at the town after and say, you approved that, so.
It wasn't approved plan, yeah.
Well, they may have, I mean, it's a condo project, they're going to have presumably a snow clearing contract, they may have to clear that, but I'm just-
Correct.
I think we should monitor it and see if it's something we need to-
Right, I don't think we should have to take that liability.
To try and come up with a solution.
We know there's an issue, let's take care of it.
Take a look at it, see how it goes, and go from there.
All right, are there any other issues or updates on Village Commons we need to address? Jim Robbins, can you hear me?
I had a question.
Okay, Hazel, go ahead.
All right. We know now that as far as you had four units left in the original building that you did at Village Commons, 16-
16 already passed the papers.
Right. 16, then you still have, and the affordable unit is 10.
Yeah, that's all set. They already have, yeah.
Does it have a CO?
It's been a week I've been waiting for the CO. I haven't gotten it in my hand yet, but it's been approved.
You've had the final inspections on it?
Yes, a week ago.
Electrical, everything, so 10 has all the, you're just waiting for the paper for number 10?
Yes, yes. I just asked Destiny on the way here, and she said it's still not ready, so. I don't want to put any pressure on them, you know? They'll give it to me when it's ready, so.
All right, what's the status of 12 and 14?
Uh, no, there are only two units left now.
Two left.
One is 13, and one is 14.
Right, okay.
They're both almost 100% done, and they both will get their occupancy permits right around, within a couple, three days of each other. I mean, once I get to it. We still have the last few things to do, so.
But just, a couple of days, I just would like more of a timing than that. Are you, are you going to finish them within two weeks? You're going to finish them in three weeks? And what are we talking about?
I'm hoping to get everything done by the end of this month.
By the end of this month?
Correct.
Okay, one is affordable, and one is market value.
One is a normal one, yes, the market rate.
Okay, and have you sold the one that's the market value yet?
What was that again?
The one that is being sold market value. Do you have a contract on that one yet?
Yes, everything is all sold out. Everything is sold.
Even the two affordable ones?
The, all the affordables have been sold, finally, they've been sold. It sat there, you know, I finished those units because the, the board wanted me to. I'm sitting on those units for one year now, completed and paying interest on it.
All right, so you hope to have the CO in the last two?
Yes.
Which would be the affordable and the-
One affordable, one market.
By the end of this month, the latest?
That is what I'm hoping for, yes. They're both sold, you know, being pre-sold, so they should be taking possession pretty soon. Number six, I think, is closing on Friday, so that's the first affordable that's going to close on Friday.
Okay.
I had this occupancy permit on that since October of last year. What?
I just want to correct your statement. You're sitting on them for a year because the contract that you purchased required you to finish other units, so it's not that the town was preventing you from selling those, you know what I mean?
I never said the town is preventing me in doing anything.
But you just said, you just said, I was paying the interest.
I was asked to finish those units before I would do anything else, so I did finish them. All I was saying was, I finished them, I finished them almost a year ago, and, and sat on them, paying interest on those units, which is, just to, just to something to say, not blaming anybody, you know, so.
Farouk, if you finished those affordable units a year ago, then why don't you have occupancy permits?
Because, no, we had the occup, I had the occupancy permit on number six a year ago, or eight months ago, so.
So why, so why did, why did we have that whole, I mean, you've been in here for six months now, and we've been, that, that poor neighbor was delayed getting into his unit because you couldn't get an occupancy permit on one of the affordable units. So don't tell me that you finished them because they weren't finished.
Not all of them were finished, I'm only talking about that one unit. And the reason why they have not closed yet is we got the regulatory agreement signed by the DHCD two days ago. You cannot sell those units before the regulatory agreement is in place. There's a lot of complications in, in this. I just got this on Friday, so my attorney put it on record, and the first one is closing on Friday, and the second one, which is number 10 that Hazel was talking about, that's going to close next week, and number 13 by the end of this, by the end of this month, so.
Yeah, it was 10 we were waiting for, as far as 16 went. In other words, we were waiting for him to finish, get a CO in 10, the affordable unit, before he was issued the CO in 16, which is the one the neighbor was waiting for.
Correct.
No, I understand that, I just, I, I don't want to hear that they were done a year ago.
Right.
And I also, if I go to DHCD and ask them flat out, why was this delayed, and they tell me it's because the developer did not do something properly, or, I mean, I don't know.
What did I do? I submitted those plans.
You want, you expect me to blame DHCD for a delay in-
No, I'm just saying that I couldn't close before DHCD gave the documents. Actually, the, the units were not even sold till like a month ago. I mean, those affordable units, because the whole thing was delayed, the lottery, the this, the that. I had no control over that. I just sit there and take it. I'm not blaming anybody, it's all complete now, and by the end of the month-
All right.
The whole, the whole kit and caboodle will be done.
All right, we need to move on. Any, any other questions? All right, so Lisa, you'll give us an update on, as needed, on the, on the drainage issues? Jim Robbins, any other comments before we move on and let Farouk go?
No further comments, thank you.
Okay. Farouk, thanks for coming in. We'll see you on the 18th, 25th, depending on town meeting.
Okay. Are we going to discuss the other thing, or should I just write you another email?
Write me another email, we just continued that to the next-
Okay, to follow up on that, okay. We'll do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, we, it's a, that's a public hearing, so we just continued that.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right. Jim Robbins, I can see your screen, and I can see you made comments in chat, but I cannot read the comments in chat because we don't have Zoom. Oh, oh, there you go, thank you, Sheila, your technology is astounding. All right, so everybody can now see the letter on 25 Gleason Street, requesting a continuance. I'll read it into the record, dated September 30th, to Jim Robbins, Town Planner. Dear Mr. Robbins, we understand the October 18th planning board meeting will likely be postponed because of the fall town meeting. Accordingly, on behalf of the Walter Ward, the landowner, and Milford Stone, the operator, collectively the applicants, we request a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for October 18th, 2022, until the planning board's meeting scheduled for November 1st, 2022. We appreciate your attention to this request and look forward to seeing the planning board in November. Jim, can you clarify for me, are they, are we just moving them to November 1st, or do they want to come, do they want to be scheduled at the next available meeting?
Hold on a minute?
Yes? Yeah, I can hear you.
It looks like we can use December 1st, and I know, we can ask Lisa, since she's in the room.
No, Lisa left the room, Jim. Lisa's gone home, so.
They're still working on the town engineer's comments, I know that.
All right. Well, why don't we just continue that to November 1st, then? That's what they requested. All right, we have a draft motion on that, anybody want to?
I move the planning board continue the public hearing for the earth moving special permit application for 25 Gleason Street to Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, at 6:30 PM, as requested by the applicant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor of continuing that public hearing. Next item on the agenda is the Silver Hollow Estates, discussion of landscape planting behind lot 26. This is relative to a special subdivision approval that we approved a while ago. The developer's been in negotiations with one of the abutting landowners to provide additional screening. We just need to make a finding that this is a de minimis change and does not require reopening the subdivision approval, and will not have a detrimental effect on the subdivision. So Jim Robbins, do you have any comments before we move that forward? Do you want to share your screen with the, the planting? Are you able to do that? I know we all got a copy of that, I just don't know if we can show it to the public.
One moment, if you give me a minute, I will find it. While, while I'm looking for it, I think you summarized it very well. The applicant has worked with yourself and myself and the abutters, the Studel family, to find a solution to the visual impact of the subdivision from their property, particularly the, the windows. They don't, they wish to block their windows for privacy reasons, and I understand that. The applicant has been very good at working with the planning board and with the neighbors at finding a solution. They looked at extending the fence, that ended up being very costly. They looked at, we staggered, our providing, the abutters asked to apply, and the applicant agreed to it. So we had, we received a letter from the abutters- So we had, we received a letter from the abutters, accepting that offer, 5/3. And which I'm looking for right now.
It's in the Dropbox, I think.
Um, it was an email on, um...
Maybe it's not in the Dropbox.
October 3rd email to us, Jim. Who's got the picture?
Okay. One moment.
While he's looking for that, Steve, the developer's here. Do you want to, just, do you have any desire to address the board on this? I mean, we've all seen this, I think we can move it forward. It's pretty minimal change.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to make a motion on this? Did we get a draft motion on this? All right, I'll make a motion that the landscaping planting behind Lot 26 is considered a de minimis change to the subdivision approval at Silver Hollow Estates and does not derogate from the intent of the approval. I'm sorry, Jim, say that again?
That's a good motion and you should be able to see lights appearing now.
There it is, it's on the screen now.
Right. Can you just move your, if you see that red line where it says install 5 staggered 5 to 6 inch arborvitae to extend the fence line by approximately 15 feet? That red line goes over to the left to, you know, those, that green area is the 5 arborvitae. And I've been out there. That should give them some increased privacy. So I appreciate the developer doing that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. Thank you for coming in. Safe drive. Next item on the agenda.
And before we move on, can we just ask Lisa whether she had any comments on the gravel removal, whatever it's called, sorry?
25 Gleason Street, we, we continue that public hearing, so I'm not sure we can address it anymore.
Oh, I was just asking whether she...
Yeah, you, we, we continue that public hearing while, while you were out of the rooms. We continued it to November 1st because that's what they asked for. We just weren't sure if they wanted to come up sooner. But since they asked for the first, that's what they're getting. All right. No, I wanted to get your comments on that because we have a lot of MYLARS and we have an A&R. I just was hoping, all right, let's move on to the next agenda item and then I'll turn to Lisa. We have an execution of the MYLARS for the amended definitive subdivision plan and BWALT Eastman plans for West Park Drive extension. Lisa, can you just tell us what's been changed? I don't think it was a big change, but I just want to get, make sure the public understands that before we vote on it.
So no, well, not no. The changes were, we agreed to use some of the existing driveway instead of building a new road on a certain part of that. In the beginning, it was going to be all new road to the cul-de-sac. We're going to utilize some of the existing road, or they are going to utilize some of the existing road. And then a portion of it will be new. As a result, the drainage design had to be changed to accommodate that. We made them relook at drainage and make sure that, that the driveway as it is meets new drainage standards. And they made those adjustments, so therefore there were some easement changes and obviously the drainage changed, so.
So we, we had a fairly lengthy discussion of these changes. We approved it, but the approval was with the understanding that engineering would iron out some minor details or drainage details. And that's really what is reflected on this amended plan.
And then the other set of MYLARS are actually the easement plans for the town to get drainage, we have drainage on their property and they're granting us easement rights. So that's the second set that you'll be signing.
Is that related to the BWALT? I know that was mentioned in the...
No, that's actually like a third part of it. The second part was, we had asked for some extensive drainage improvements that helps the town and the public right of way, which they agreed to do. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain those once the job is complete. So you'll see those right along the public right of way. There's a lot more of an easement for us than was previously approved or planned. And it's, it's great because it gives us...
When you say the public right of way, do you mean the driveway?
The right of way for Flanders Road, right along Flanders Road.
Okay, for Flanders Road, then, okay.
Right, yeah, sorry.
All right.
I know it's two different projects, but...
Okay, and so then the BWALT Eastmans, what were those changes?
There actually wasn't any changes to the BWALT.
Okay, so that's just, we, we have to re-sign everything?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
So we'll do the actual signing after the meeting? Because there's 75 sheets or so and we each have to sign each one? So, good times.
Some of us come in tomorrow and do them, maybe?
I think that's fine. I think that's fine. Jim Robbins, when, when do these need to be signed by?
As soon as you plan, there's no deadline for it. Obviously, the work is proceeding according to the plan because this is the recording of the registry of deeds.
Okay, so if you can't stay tonight to sign, then we, we can sign over the next couple of days. Try and get in here, in here by the end of the week.
What you're signing are 37, what you're signing are 37 plan sheets for the definitive plan and three easement sheets.
Right. Okay. All right, we have a draft motion on this. Anybody care to make that? Okay, I'm, I'll move that the planning board approve and endorse the plans entitled definitive plan of West Park Drive Extension dated November 19th, 2020, last revised August 8th, 2022, and prepared by Beals and Thomas Incorporated in a one-plan sheet titled Eastman Plan Flanders Road and West Park Drive Extension Sheet Number EA1 dated March 22, 2022, last revised September 7th, 2022, and prepared by Beals and Thomas Incorporated.
I second that.
Jim, before we vote, is everybody eligible to vote on this?
Some public hearing on the amendment.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, please.
I believe John Gelsic did not attend the meetings on the public hearing for the amendment to the definitive plan.
Okay, so John, you'll, you won't be able to vote on this. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving that amended plan? That is four to zero. And the opposed?
He doesn't decide.
I don't even think you get to abstain, right? I'm not sure what procedure is, but we'll just say four to zero in favor.
You don't have to sign 75 pages.
That's an unexpected benefit of that.
Just so you know, because this is an industrial subdivision and it's considered a conventional plan, you only need three members to approve it and therefore I only need three signatures on the plan. So if someone feels they can't do it tonight or, or can't come in, I only need three member signatures.
No, that's fine. I'm sure we can all make it happen.
I can come in tomorrow to sign, so I will do that.
Let's move on to the next agenda item. We have...
It's easy for me to come in tomorrow.
And, well, we have a discussion on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I, I don't think there's really anything, any updates on that, Jim, unless you have something you want to add. We can move past that.
The consultant, Vanessa Hagan, Bresslin, and Donnie Gorsko, who's been our consultant on this project, is meeting tomorrow with Mark and myself and the department heads to bring town staff up to speed on how the process works. I think that that will be informative to those people that will be working with the implementation committee. And then, once we have done that, we check to see that the members of the implementation committee have been sworn in, we can schedule an implementation meeting.
All right, any questions? All right. We, we have an A&R plan, Jim, but I don't see it on the agenda. Can we take that up under a discussion of future town meeting articles? Since it's related to the article on Zero Ruggles? No?
You might be able to, I don't want to speak for Jim. You might be able to take it up under an agenda item that wasn't reasonably considered. But you can't, I don't think you'd be able to put it under a different agenda item because A&R's are usually their own separate agenda item.
Yes, there is an item on the agenda, look, get it.
Is there, was there a revised agenda filed? Because I, I don't see it on here. Is anybody else, am I missing it?
I don't see it.
You have an agenda that says A&R's at the top.
No, it says A&R Plans, and typically we would have the address of the A&R in there.
Yes, and you have an item at the bottom that says town meeting articles. This is a town meeting.
So I know that this A&R resulted from a select board meeting that occurred last night. So I think it's reasonable to say that, you know, I, until last night, I didn't know that this was coming before the board today. So, and we do have an article on future town meeting articles. I think that's a fair enough warning. So anyway, Zero Ruggles Street is a parcel that the town is proposing to, to buy. It's a 13-acre parcel in an A&R plan presented to us that shows 10 acres. And Parcel B on this plan will be transferred to the care of the Conservation Commission. Parcel C and Parcel A, which is a small hammer-like parcel at the end of Breen Road, will transfer to the care of the Select Board. None of those parcels are buildable. Parcel C was really intended to extend the boundaries of the water tower and give some leeway to that, to that parcel because it's currently kind of small. So the Select Board felt it was important to use some of this land to add to that water tower site, which is why they, they left that out. And then Parcel A, I think, is just intended to provide a little bit of parking for people to access the trail systems that'll be running through there. I, I don't want to speak for the Select Board on that, though. Really, we're just being asked to endorse an A&R plan. I don't know if anybody has questions? Jim Robbins, do you have anything to add to that?
Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see the A&R plan. I, I think you did a good job of explaining the purpose of the three parcels. I just want to add that the land known as Parcel E at the end of Breen Road is a very small parcel. It's about 60 feet deep. It provides enough parking area for five to six cars. That was the intention of the Selectmen to allow people to travel through the property and access the open space parcel, which is the E, as well as the day-pray property, which directly abuts Parcells A and B to the west. And as you know, the, the town purchased day-pray property several town meetings ago. That completes a very large contiguous open space parcel. And the day-pray property attaches to other town land in the subdivision known as Wayside Estates. So you could technically walk from Ruggles Street to Wayside Estate or vice versa on this property.
Okay, thanks, Jim. All right. I, I will make a motion that the planning board approve and endorse the A&R plan entitled Approval Not Required Plan of Land Zero Ruggles Street and Breen Road, Westboro Mass, dated October 4th, 2022.
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but is this going to be an open meeting law issue if it's not on the agenda?
Well, I think, I think in the sense that it is a few, a town meeting article on Zero Ruggles Road, I think that the fact that we just got the A&R plan today.
Does it need to be signed before town meeting?
Yeah, Jim, can we, we have a meeting scheduled for town meeting. Can we sign it then and, and take this up and actually put it, put it on the agenda for that Monday, the 18th? Is it Monday, the 17th?
I think, I think that it was the intention of the town manager to show this plan, endorse that town meeting. So you wouldn't be able to sign it then. I wouldn't have time to scan it and get it up for a town meeting because I have to have all articles to them the Friday before the Monday town meeting.
Yeah, the only thing it wouldn't have, yeah, the only thing it wouldn't have. I have my Dropbox, Jim.
Hey, can you look in it? There should be a revised agenda in that box.
Well, I did look in it and I don't see a revised agenda.
Okay, hold on, I'm going to go to the town meeting. I'm sorry, I'm going to go to the town webpage.
We're all going to the webpage. Yeah, I don't see it on here. Still the, still the same one, Jim. So the only thing we wouldn't...
The button is still there.
Yeah, the only thing we wouldn't have, we could still show this plan at town meeting. The only thing we wouldn't have would be your signature. And we could report, you know, presumably report to town meeting that we endorsed it because we could take this up before town meeting if we posted our meeting for, you know, 6:30 prior to the 7 o'clock town meeting. I think that's probably safe. I don't want...
I'm the only one that has an issue with it, I just won't sign.
No, I mean, I, I see your point on it. I, I don't want it to come back to us. So I, I don't, I don't see any harm in waiting till town meeting to endorse this. Jim, do you have a comment?
The other thing you could do is have a meeting between now and town meeting. So I can get this to...
All right, how many signatures do you need?
I just need, I need three votes in the affirmative and it's my signature.
All right.
I mean, I don't see any harm of the fact that we put it up on the, on the, at the meeting and just say that the board, you know, hadn't had an opportunity to, to sign this in time for it to be put up on the screen. I mean, you know, the town, nobody in, none of the audience is going to ask about that aspect. And at least we'll be following the open meeting part of it. And if we had a meeting prior to the, the, before the town... before the town meeting starts, had a meeting, made our decision then, that could just be announced. And even if they-- the town, you know, I don't think people are really going to complain about the fact that they're not seeing in front of them the actual signed one versus what they're more interested in is what it looks like.
All right.
Not with the signatures.
I'm going to withdraw that motion. And I'm-- why don't we do this? Is anybody available on the 11th if we needed to have a meeting on this? That would probably be the first day we could do it. And-- or I can't meet Friday. So, we could do a meeting Friday, but it would have to be posted first thing tomorrow morning.
I can do it the 11th.
11th is fine with me.
All right, so I'll discuss this with Jim and the town manager tomorrow to see if there's any urgent need to have this endorsed prior to town meeting or if we can just take that up at the town meeting so it can be posted again and just make sure that we're respecting open meeting laws. I think that's the safest thing to do. All right, all right. Jim, are you-- you understand what we're going to do there?
Yes, so you need to post an agenda for the 11th. At what time?
Well, we're going to see if we even need to do that or if we can just post, put this item on the agenda for the 18th.
For the 17th.
Sorry. So, tomorrow, if you could check with Christie to see if she actually needs you to sign it prior to town meeting or if we can just wait till town meeting to to discuss this, I guess, properly in accordance with open meeting.
Yep.
All right, so if she says she needs-- you know, she gives us a valid reason why she needs it, then we'll post a meeting for Tuesday, 6:30, like we always do. And it'll be just that one agenda item.
11th.
Yeah, if we need to do it the 11th. I prefer not to do it the 11th. We're putting a-- I don't want to meet for just one A&R plan. That seems ridiculous. I think we should be able to do it on the 17th. All right. All right. We have a discussion on the Housing Choice Act. I don't think there's any update there. We have approved meeting minutes. Hazel, do you want to take those?
We can. You said you wanted to wait till Kristen was here.
Only on the--
Oh, just on the joint one?
Yeah, only on the joint meeting.
And we have minutes for the 23rd of August and the 30th of August. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Are there any changes? I move that we approve the minutes for August 23rd and August 30th.
I second that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is five to zero in favor of approving those two minutes. Jim Robbins, I don't see anything else on the agenda. Am I missing anything or are there any other updates you want to tell us?
No, you've concluded as required. Find out at the town meeting. I'll send the rest of the board, the entire board, an email.
All right. You broke up a little bit there, Jim. Maybe you could just repeat that last bit.
Tell the town manager and find-- execute.
Yeah, Jim, I think we're losing you. Yeah. Right, I think you're saying that you're going to check with town manager to see if we need to post that meeting for the 11th.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move this forward. I will make a motion then to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor.